Welcome, everybody. To the 2014 Annual Meeting of Leland and Gray Union High School District Number 34. The legal voters of Leland and Gray Union High School District Number 34 surprising the towns of Brookline, Jamaica, New Fane, Townsend, and Windham are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Leland and Gray High School Jiminazium in Townsend, Vermont, on Tuesday, February 4th, 2014, at 7:30 PM for the 2014 Annual Meeting and for a public informational hearing on questions to be decided by Australian ballot to act upon the following articles. Article number one is to elect a moderator to serve from July 1st, 2014 to June 30th, 2015. What is your pleasure for moderator? Ralph Coleman. Ralph Coleman has been nominated. Are there further nominations for moderator? Hearing on all declared nominations closed and asked for a motion for the clerk to cast one ballot for Ralph Coleman to serve as moderator.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the clerk casting one ballot for Ralph Coleman to serve as moderator from July 1st, 2014 to June 30th, 2015, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. And it's carried. Thank you very much. Article two is to elect a clerk to serve from July 1st, 2014 to June 30th, 2015. What is your pleasure for clerk?
Whoever she is.
That was Kathy Greve.
Kathleen Kathy Greve. Kathy Greve has been nominated. Are there further nominations?
She's declined.
She has declined. Are there other nominations for clerk to serve from July 1st, 2014 to June 30th, 2015?
Ralph?
Yes.
Maybe we could just explain what the job is.
Sure.
I'd be happy to do it. Can you all hear me? Um, I think you can hear me without the microphone usually in loud enough. But I think, I don't know Kathy, you want to speak to it, there's very, um, it's very limited.
Yeah, it's, um, the job is pretty much taking minutes at this meeting. Assigning the warnings and taking the minutes for any, um, public meeting of the high school district, which is usually just this meeting. So it's kind of a one night a year job, um, unless there are other meetings, but there haven't been for quite a while.
Don't be afraid to nominate yourself if someone feels they would like to or do it.
Lori, Lori, who is it? Lori Cristelli. I'll name it Lori Cristelli.
What's the last name?
Cristelli.
Okay. Gloria Cristelli, is that right? Has been nominated. Are there further nominations? If not, I'll declare nominations closed and entertain a motion for the clerk to cast one ballot for Gloria Cristelli. It's been moved and seconded that the clerk cast one ballot for Gloria Cristelli to serve as your clerk from July 1st, June 2014 to June 30th, 2015. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. And it's carried. Thank you very much. Article three, to elect a treasurer to serve from July 1st, 2014 to June 30th, 2015. Cynthia Davis has been nominated. Are there further nominations? Hearing on all declared nominations closed and entertain a motion that the clerk cast one ballot for Cynthia Davis for treasurer for the upcoming year. It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the clerk casting one ballot for Cynthia Davis to serve as your treasurer from July 1st, 2014 to June 30th, 2015, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. And it's carried. Thank you. Article four, to see what salaries and/or allowances the district will pay to its officers, directors, and treasurer. What is the current, uh, what is the current pay? I think it's, uh...
Four hundred for members?
Five hundred for the chair and five hundred for treasurer, right? Okay, so it's, it's five hundred for the board chair, four hundred for the members, and five hundred for the treasurer. What is your pleasure? Some, it's been moved that we do pay the, uh, board chair five hundred, members four hundred, and the treasurer five hundred per year. Is there a second to that? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. And it's carried. Article number five is to set the date of the annual meeting of the district for the first Tuesday of February in the year of 2015. What does that mean?
That's a good prospect.
Maybe we don't have to do that. It says the first Tuesday.
As long as we say the first Tuesday.
After.
Inside joke, right? We have a computer, but I would be, we, February 3rd.
February 3rd. Believe that date is February 3rd. Did I have a motion to that effect? So moved. It's been moved, is there a second?
One second.
It's been moved and seconded to set the, the date of the annual meeting of the district for the first Tuesday, which is the 3rd of February in the year 2015. Any discussion on that article? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. And it's carried. Article number six is to conduct a public informational hearing on the 2014-2015 Leland and Gray Union High School District Number 34 budget, which is to be established on February 5th, 2014 by Australian ballot on the following ballot question. Shall the Leland and Gray Union High School District adopt a budget of $6,999,318 to repay expenses and liabilities for the 2014-2015 school year? Do you want to open it up, Emily, or do you want to just ask if you want to give something first before we ask the question?
Sure, we'd be happy to speak. The board itself, they have, maybe, maybe if we could, like, start at the end and introduce our...
Excuse me. I'm Dr. Stephen John, I'm superintendent of school. And, uh, welcome, I appreciate you all coming out tonight. Don't forget to get out to vote, uh, weather permitting tomorrow, uh, try to prevail against the snow. I don't know whether it's going to be a snow day, don't start any rumors, but, uh, I'll be getting up early to check out the weather. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dr. Rindorf, and I'm the principal of Leland and Gray. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Jeremy Kellaway, Leland and Gray Board Member from New Fane.
Paul Nadavi from New Fane.
Paul Jerris, Board Member from Townsend.
Joe Winrick, also from Townsend.
Mike Dolman, also from Townsend.
Emily Long, New Fane.
Dionne Newton-Windom.
Abby Dixon, Jamaica.
Bruce Parlam, Jamaica.
And Wendell Paul, Brookline.
I'm Frank Ruck, the financial officer.
Okay, um, I'll just, first of all, I just want to say that I barely just got back into the state. I've been down at our nation's capital for the last few days, attending a conference for school boards, um, National School Boards Association, and, um, it's been quite a, quite an interesting few days down there, and, um, it's going to be an interesting few months, I think, coming up in our own state house here. There's an awful lot going on in education in not only the country, but in our, our state. But we're here in front of you today to talk about the Leland and Gray budget, and, um, our proposed budget is $6,999,318, and that translates into a 2.8% increase in spending over last year's budget. Uh, as, as we've done in the last several years, I think we stood in front of you for quite a number of years and told you that, um, we're focusing, our budget is focused, focused on the needs of our students, and so that's what we're, um, that's what we're presenting for you tonight. But we're also trying to do, meet the needs of the students with the least impact on the taxpayers that we can, um, do. But that being said, our students and their education remain our top priority, so that's, that's been part of this. This is a really great work. We have been really focused on, um, trying to increase opportunities and keep spending down, and there's been a lot of support. We've got great leadership in administration in this school and in RSU, and so we're moving forward. I, I think, instead of going through specific lines in the budget, although, um, board members are ready to share anything you would like them to share, we're also here to answer questions for you. Um, I just wanted to say one thing that happened to me down in, uh, before, before we open it up for questions, I just wanted to say one thing that happened to me down in DC. Um, I, I actually was fortunate enough to attend a speech by Dr. Bernice King, who is Martin Luther King's daughter, and she said something that kind of struck me. She said, "Public education was and still is a civil rights issue." And, and I thought that was interesting, and I, I knew that was something that rang in my, my mind somewhere about where I'd heard that before, and I went back to some notes, and in December I heard, um, our new Secretary of Education, Rebecca Holcomb, and she said something very similar. She said, "Public schools are the civil rights issue of our times." In fact, I think they're both right, and, and, um, we're here to bring a budget to you that we feel is, is necessary to meet the needs of our students for a world-class education in this 21st century. So, we'd like to open it up for you and see what, unless somebody else wants to share something first. Okay. We're here to answer questions.
Anybody have any questions for the board, for the principals, superintendent? Yes?
I just, I just want to know more about under Support Services, Summary Page, 25% increase, if that was just stated, what that's about, was it because of the program?
What page are...
Summary Page, uh, under Support Services, School Administration, 25.7% increase. Does that make sense?
All right, let me, let me maybe take a shot at it. So I think what we're looking at is page 13. You're looking at, so, so really, you're looking at the things that stand out in this budget. We talked about this in our last meeting. So you see a glaring 25.7% increase rate. So, you know, the way I understand that, we talked about that at our last meeting, is there's certain costs that we pay, uh, for being part of the WCSU for administrative costs, and because of the number of students we have in Leland and Gray, vice the number of students in the elementary schools, and ours being in a higher ratio, there's more cost associated with that. In addition to that, the Director of Technology position was supplied by two federal grants that were built before to offset that cost. Those federal grants are not available in this budget. So with that extra cost, that's absorbed into that 25%. So Durin or Stephen, I don't know if any more to add to that, but that's how I understand that.
I don't know.
It has nothing to do with the program that I pulled from the various, like, all that, that's not considered.
I don't believe we will, any new programs this year.
I, I, I'm here for Torey here.
Yeah, you have to speak up about the audience. We do have a mic that, uh, Rob passed around, but, uh...
All right, I, I know what you're referring to, so, the, who, twenty, did I come? Go ahead.
I think that's the question.
Oh, okay. Please go ahead.
Restate the question.
I know it's hard to hear, so...
You know the question.
Okay.
I just wondered if the all ed program was part of that 25%, or if that was something different?
Uh, it is, it is not part of that 25%, it is part of the increase in special education costs, because that is correct, that all ed, our home, hands-on, life-engaged program has moved to special education, um, which has allowed for a reduction in technical education, uh, in, in that department, and, uh, instead, it has a 57% reimbursement rate as a special education program. So the majority of the students in the program were eligible for special education. So the program itself has not changed, other than we have allowed seventh graders to attend as well.
So when you see the increase, you see it under Special in the middle on that same page, um, where it says Special Education, the increase is 10.7%. That's where the tech is now.
Thank you.
I, maybe if I could mention also, that, given that that entire program, which is a full-time faculty member and two or three paraeducators, the reason why it's, the increase is not higher is because a special education, the special education department had a reduction in force for next year. Nothing to do with all ed or home, but the total number of special educators was reduced by one.
Any, any other questions?
Yes?
I've got a question just about how, um, you figure out the tax rate given all the different towns, just sort of thinking about, like, the common level of appraisal, how does that figure with all the different towns, like, coming up with the tax rate? I assume every, because every town has its...
Sure, I could answer that for you. So at the, at the district level, because as you are observing, Windom, CLA is 95%, and it's much different in Townsend, in, uh, Brookline, New Fane, and Jamaica, there is no adjustment at the district level, uh, but what the statutes require is that the tax rate of the high school be allocated to each district proportionally based on the actual membership of attendance here. So, once that, uh, proportion is allocated, and, and there is a schedule in this book that shows, uh, that allocation, uh, once that allocation is made, um, it's combined at the elementary level, so it's on page, uh, 15, um, the pro-rata tax rate is, uh, combined at the elementary school, uh, so then you have a K-12 cost, and then the CLA is applied to that entire K-12, uh, K-12 cost to get to the actual tax rate that is, um, sent through the select board and the town treasurer ultimately to the, to the voters.
So what you're saying is that in each individual town, the CLA would be applied to the Leland and Gray's...
Uniquely, yes. Uniquely, and it's essentially, so for Windom's share of Leland and Gray, it's, it's brought in, and you will see that in your town report, uh, the proportion of, uh, on page 15, so for example, in Windom, um, without a CLA adjustment, we have a tax rate proposed of a dollar seven two, um, eight seven. You see that online, 20?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's the Union High School proposal, and then you have the, the five towns below that, of which 92 cents is associated with Windom. And, and what that is, is the ratio of students as a total of all students at Leland and Gray, uh, times the, um, times the total tax rate. That piece is brought in and combined with the Windom Elementary, K-6 tax rate, and that's what, uh, is, is us, you know, equalized through the common level of appraisal.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Yes, well, if I could just follow up, so many of you may have read the article in the paper about Leland and Gray's budget, and just to, you illustrate the question here, because this article ends with information that is in fact listed on page 15 as the cents, uh, you know, he's quoted here in the paper, for example, Windom goes from 80 cents to 92 cents, and that's the numbers that you see right there in columns FY14, FY15 underneath that dollar seventy-two that Frank spoke to. Well, in fact, that, that information isn't incorrect, but it isn't really what people are going to pick. It isn't what happens, it's just how, it's apportioned out to the, uh, to the each town, member town of the Union School District, and then, as Frank says, it's adjusted, combined with the, uh, the pre-K-6, uh, to, uh, and then, uh, applied, uh, by CLA to it, and you end up quite a different place in each town, and if you got together and compare, you can see there's quite a difference in the tax impact across the member towns. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes?
Again, on page 13, under Expenditures, the first subtotal for instruction, it shows a decrease of 89,000. How is that proportion between resource materials for the classroom and personnel?
So, yeah, okay, um, yeah, so on, uh, this, this goes back to Art's point earlier, where, uh, you see alternative education going, going from 118,000 to zero, uh, and that, that really accounts for the, you know, majority of the decline, or act more than the decline. So, so, uh, as, as Durin was saying, that program has, has been eligible for, uh, special education reimbursement, and it's, it's essentially still intact, but it is now reported under Special Education, and that, that, that accounts for most of the 127,000 dollar increase. So, if you were looking at apples to apples in terms of comparison, it's, it's really the, the subtotal that includes both, uh, instruction and, um, the Special Ed Co-Curricular and Career Center, which is essentially, uh, up 38,000 or, or less than 1%. So, to answer your question, there is, there is no apportionment, it's 100% moved into Special Ed, and it's essentially the same, the same program, it's, it's, it's just that now those, those students are eligible for, uh, the program costs are eligible for reimbursement.
I might not have been listening, but, and that includes the Technical Ed B's too? It's reduced by a third? Related to it?
The Technical Education is, uh, is a, um, a different curriculum that is being addressed, and, uh, Durin, would you like to speak to the STEM program and...
Yep, sure.
And the way in which that's...
Yep, yep, so the, there's actually two reductions in Technical Education. One is that, there's two reductions in Technical Education. One, uh, is a, is a teacher who teaches one block a day, who had, was a little bit more than a third, and, but he requested that it go to a third, so it's point, it's something like 0.38 to 0.3...
0.38 position to 0.33, so it's just a tiny change. The larger change is a 0.25 position in Technical Education, which is being replaced by members of the Science Department teaching a STEM program, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics, which still has a considerable hands-on component, and with the space opened up in the Tech Ed classroom, they can do more technology-based projects right in the shop setting. Uh, it's much more in keeping with the, uh, contemporary approach to Technical Education, which has, um, greater career and college, um, application than the traditional tech education, Technical Education, and so, and we already have the Science staff teaching STEM programs in the middle school, because it's specifically for middle school, it's not a reduction in high school. Uh, it's a 90 program that seventh graders and eighth graders participate in, and we have been concurrently running the STEM program for seventh and eighth graders, but because of the master schedule, we can't get all the students into those courses. The only way we could guarantee that the students would have the, the STEM courses, which includes a computer component, because otherwise they didn't have, but we kind of, um, it's just a required computer component, which is also necessary, uh, so that's why we made the decision to replace one with the other. So we also have struggled in finding a certified, uh, teacher in Technical Education. Uh, we advertised the position last year, and we're unable to get applicants, so, maybe I shouldn't say this, so probably like this, but, but the current person who's teaching is not certified in Technical Education, and, uh, so that also led us to that decision.
So it'd be the same order of class hours, just a different place?
Oh, yes.
Any other questions?
I, I have a broader question, and if it isn't appropriate to the meeting, just tell me, you'll tell me later. On page 11, we see the Leland and Gray enrollment forecast, and I'm wondering, all right, how does the budget you're asking us to approve relate to the forecast that shows continuing lower enrollment? And let me just say, I'm a total supporter of public education, but I just, help me understand.
It's a, you know, it's a great question. We are, we've been looking at this kind of a budget, I mean, this kind of enrollment decrease for quite a long time. We never really know for sure what our enrollment's going to look like, but, um, if you look at these, the enrollment numbers, you know, they are going down. It's not huge numbers of students, though. I mean, you know, it's a graph, and it shows, you know, a reduction in the number of students. It's not typical that, um, when you reduce your enrollment by five or 10 kids, you can reduce staff or, or programs, you know, so, um, this budget, that's, I guess that's what I was trying to get at in the beginning when I was saying, we, we are trying to, um, figure out a way to provide the, an education for the increasing needs of our kids. You just heard Durin speak about STEM, you know, and, and that is just one of so many other needs that are out there for our kids. What we're trying to do is continue to support our kids' education with all these increased needs, but still, um, keep the costs at a minimum as possible. If we do not continue to provide programs, we will not, we will see a much larger decrease, I think, in, in our enrollment. Right now, we are lucky enough to have students that want to come to Leland and Gray, because we do offer good programs, and that is helping us a lot, and we'd like to see that continue. It's also just absolutely critical and necessary that we do provide, like I, I spoke to, about before, a world-class education for our kids. They are leaving Leland and Gray, and they need to be prepared for the next year's, um, step in their lives, whether it's on to further ed or not. And we talk about this all the time, at every level, we talk about it at our own Leland and Gray Board meetings, we, we beat ourselves up over it. It, it costs money to educate kids, but it's our responsibility, so...
If I could add something to it, too? So, you know, that's a great question, because we have made, and that's the thing, I think, on everybody's mind, is how to do things efficiently, because we know it's going to get harder, uh, going down the road. One, one other example, a small example, how can we save money? So you'll see it in the, in the report, but in the, in the past, uh, we went through New England, Associate Secondary Schools and Colleges, we had them come in, we spent $20,000 for them to look at our programs and give us advice. We had quite different meetings, we talked about that. Everybody said that's what we've always done, we reached out to other schools, we talked to other schools that were facing the same, uh, struggles with money, and we looked at what they had told us, uh, what we got out of that in the past, and as a board, we decided that what we were paying and what we got out of it wasn't, didn't make sense. So instead, we allocated a smaller amount of money to work with other schools, try and do the same thing, is we got to find ways to improve. We're not going to just give $20,000 to an organization that wasn't giving us the output. So I, I think there's things like that, that we got to do, and we got to be more efficient with our money, use it for the right things. That's, that's another small piece.
And, Matt, um, along the lines of offering, uh, amazing education for our children, we are experiencing quite a bit of, um, competition for our choice towns, and, so if we're going to, and that's going to make, perhaps make these numbers, these decreases not so significant, and they tuition in, and that's money we need to continue our, our, our place as a wonderful education, and, um... And it's, there's one private school that can afford, they have endowments, they can afford to bring buses into these towns and bus kids. And so, it's really important that we keep our, our, our school as, as a really viable place for all children, for the gifted and everybody.
Ron?
Yes?
I'd like to take the bigger picture in response to your question. You know, my administration throughout the SU, all the principals are aware of the statewide trend of declining enrollment. You've heard about this in the news. This is something that we can't ignore. We really have to try to orchestrate the attrition, the natural retirement of, of staff, and try to make sure that we have a smooth transition to new ways of providing education with, you know, what some people think is a really bad idea, larger class sizes. And, you know, that's, that's a public debate, because you're represented by the boards in terms of making decisions like that, of basically reducing force in the long-range future. But this is something that's a problem statewide. I know that the recent Regional Education Districts spending committee that was talking about trying to combine school boards into one K through pre-K through twelve around the Leland and Gray towns. The Leland and Gray towns has put off a decision to bring it to the voters because we wanna see what the legislature does. Those who are connected with legislature or follow the Vermont Legislature should do so very carefully regarding educational issues. Because I was just at the Senate Ed Committee today, Drucker, who paid by phone and testified at a hearing at this, at the House Ed Committee last week, right, at, right? So, there are lots of things going, lots of ideas, and I don't wanna speak further about them, but I commend you all to take interest and look into these issues and speak with the legislators about, legislators, about what solutions you see to the, to the issue of containing excellence in education in a cost-effective way with declining enrollment. Thank you.
Any other follow-up or additional questions? Yes?
I just wanted to add, I think that's a really important question and it bears a lot of looking. And what I'm gonna do is really just echo what Stephen said, that as this is happening throughout the state, and certainly happening here, going to these red committees, these larger units will help to address that problem, I think, very successfully. So, that was a good question to raise.
In fact, our, our state, I think, hasn't reached the bottom. We had thought the enrollment decline in our state was gonna reach the bottom, and I think twenty fifteen, they said now they bumped it out to twenty sixteen, I think, or maybe even twenty seventeen now. So, we're still seeing some decline. Although, I think in our, our supervisor union, our enrollments seem to be leveling off at the elementary schools and some of them are even increasing slightly. So, that bodes well for us at Leland and Gray.
Any other questions? Yes?
Well, Ron, students, what is the proportion of middle school students that are tuition? And what is the proportion of nine to twelve students that are tuition?
Frank, I'm not sure about how many numbers. I don't know if the numbers are specific. I know we do get, we get tuition students in, in this middle school especially because there's no school choice for the middle schoolers. But, but we do have school choice for, actually, we have statewide school choice, if anybody isn't aware of that, for nine through twelve. But do you know the proportion? He's probably looking it up.
Yeah, so, we have, as you see on the annual report, we indicate the totals, so you've probably seen that. Didn't memorize the number this year, but it's pretty consistent. This is showing...
Page eleven shows the enrollment by town.
Sixty-one. Yeah, you saw that. And up at sixty-one, the, the grade level, let's see. I could figure that out, but I don't have it right at my fingertips, fair enough. And I'd be glad to, glad to share it with you. Yeah, I think, I think it's relatively, it's, it's, it's a little bit higher at seven and eight because, as Emily was saying, Grafton and Athens come to us through choice, which they hit only at the seven and eighth level. Because once they hit nine, they go to Bellis Falls system. So, that, that does give us a little more student enrollment at seven and eight than nine through twelve. But that law is being revisited as well. The law that says if, if we have a Grafton student who wants to stay, nine through twelve, which we have Grafton, Athens, I think, more than, about eleven students, nine through twelve, they don't pay. And that law is being revisited. So, that would have a significant effect on our budget because we, we do receive more students than we send under the school choice.
I think we, we actually only send maybe one or two a year, am I right? But we take in...
About between twelve and fifteen.
Yeah, I was gonna say up to fifteen in a year.
And that's not for any tuition exchange?
Right.
That's part of the high school choice.
It includes, I mean, when I say the one or two, that includes, I don't know where they're actually going, but could be going to Brown World, I'm sure.
That's most popular among one or two, you know. It's not very many. It's more that they come back after trying out Brown World.
Yes.
Does Wadsworth, the towns that are not in that, the Leland and Gray schools, like does Wadsworth pay tuition?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
So, you got seventy-nine, I mean, trying to hear your enrollment as of twelve, this past December, you're seventy-nine students that are tuition out of three hundred and sixty-one.
A large portion of those are Wadsworth.
That's right. Most of them are Wadsworth students, yeah.
Wadsworth sends most of their kids, yeah, they've traditionally sent most of their kids to Leland and Gray. I don't know how many, I don't know the percentage anymore of what they send to Leland and Gray, but it's been traditional that they've sent their children to our school.
As a tuition student, how much do they pay capital improvements? Is something that they don't have to pay?
They, yeah, the, the state provides a format for public schools to use when they calculate allowable tuition. And what is excluded is a regular ed tuition rate, so special education's excluded and transportation is excluded. And, and pretty much everything else is included unless there's some kind of revenue stream in that subsidizes something. So, we have to remove any federal subsidies, like if there's a Title I revenue grant at Leland and Gray, which there is for, for math and reading intervention. So, it's, it does include capital improvements, though.
But not the public?
Non-special ed. We, we can build and we do build separately for special education services. But transportation, we, we do not, we're not allowed to build. Although, the state also pays about forty-seven percent of transportation costs, so there is, there is a significant support for that.
But Wadsworth, they'll take their own pay to be...
That's right. Yeah.
They run a bus.
They run a bus, they pay for it, yeah.
Just a question. I think the optimum enrollment for here was right around, what, four, twenty, or thirty? When somewhere, I mean, that would have been pretty, as far as staff, students, and facility.
About, about the year two thousand or so, Frank, am I right? About late nineties, early two thousands. We had about four hundred and twenty or so, I think, for max.
Yeah.
The school's capacity, I think, is five hundred?
Right.
We're, we're actually, we were talking about this in one of our recent board meetings. We are actually about the same enrollment here at Leland and Gray now that we were slightly higher, maybe, than, am I right? Slightly higher than we were when Leland and Gray first opened this facility in nineteen seventy.
Any more questions?
Yes, more question? In the towns in the annual report, I'm probably making friends at this question, but the towns in the annual report, the towns in our community, they list salaries. Here, yes, they do salaries, but as departments, I'm interested, I assume it's public education, what each teacher is being paid and the supervisory staff, meaning the superintendent, Frank, principal, yada, yada, yada. That's not listed. I'm sure, I'm not the only one that is interested in that, and why even have this?
I'll believe it. All right. I take it. It is public information, so you can inquire with my office and I'll be glad to supply it for you. I questioned what your interest is in it.
So, past year?
Well, I'm just saying in general, okay, the reason why it isn't publicly published is because we want to honor the employees, not being compared one to the other by the public, okay? But it is public information. My contract's public, you can have a copy of it, okay? So, just call my office and I'll be glad to...
Some, some schools, some schools do do it traditionally, some don't. I remember we used to actually do it, Phil, you remember, in New Haven, we used to do it. Now, I don't think it's in our, our report anymore. It hasn't been, you know, there's some, some towns that do ask for it. I mean, you know, it's, it's a request sometimes. We have a lot of staff, they turn around a lot here. You know, we have a lot more staff anywhere else and so...
My own company and I do the same thing.
Right. And, and Stephen's absolutely right. You're welcome to see what anyone needs here. It's public schools, public information.
I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a fine question, it's fine.
Just to clarify, Marv does not publish it. When I was much younger and working at Whitingham, they did publish it. It became quite the topic of gossip, and they decided not to publish any longer. But it's public information, so please inquire and I'll be glad to supply it for you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Yes?
Considering the declining enrollment graph that we discussed a couple of questions ago on page eleven, I'm taking a look at the five-year capital need statement on page six. Specifically, the subtotal for tax assessment fiscal years fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, I'm seeing a near year-over-year doubling on capital expenditures. And considering the board's interest in sensitivity to taxpayers and declining enrollment, I'm wondering why none of those expenditures are stretched out over a period more than three fiscal years?
Well, I'll just mention quickly, you, you may have seen that article in the paper about the, the Leland and Gray budget. One of the capital expenditures, one of the larger ones, and I think it may be the largest one in here this year, is, is the first phase of a kitchen upgrade. I think it was mentioned in the article, but if not, I'll just mention it here. Leland and Gray never had a kitchen. We, when we first built this school, the room behind us was supposed to be kitchen, and it was supposed to be a stage, and then all that got taken out. We never were able to have a kitchen in here. We've copped together a kitchen to provide food for our kids. The, the issue today is that our kids are in great need and they need to be fed. And we are feeding both breakfast and lunch, and we're feeding actually year-round now. And our facilities do not meet the needs of feeding our kids. And this is not, it's interesting. I was just down in Ernie Sanders' office and Peter Welch's office, I spoke to both of them today. This is not us alone. We, it's everywhere, and they are greatly concerned about it because there is a threat to the funding. We're not paying for that. There's a lot of federal funds for child nutrition programs, and they're always on the cutting block. We feel that that's a priority. Our kids won't learn if they're hungry. So, we are committed to continuing to provide whatever is necessary for food. That being said, there's other things in there. We, we could, you know, put it out forward. But the board made a decision on the capital plan. Some of it is, somebody else help me with this because I don't have it in front of me. But controls for heating systems and, Frank, call me up.
On page six, it's a lot of physical plant maintenance.
Oh, the insulation, right.
Window replacement, keeping the building up. It, it can get stretched. This is a plan. The plan could also change. I mean, you know, there were adjustments to this year's bottom-line number because of the other things we saw impact the budget. So, some of the things that we had hoped to do this year aren't, aren't here. And some of the things that we hoped to do in two thousand and sixteen and seventeen may, may not, may not materialize. There could be a more pressing need and we'll have to change that. You know, that's really just a sort of roadmap.
And, and I'll just say one more thing sort of in general about the capital plan. We are really committed to a capital plan and keeping our facilities up. And it has paid off for us. There's a lot of other schools around the state that have not been able to do that, and they're paying for it now. We even have some locally in this part of the state. So, we're, you know, we're trying to make sure that we stay ahead of it as much as we can because, as we all know, with our own homes, things need to be taken care of.
Well, I would just, you mentioned control system, and that is, that is to, to maintain the system that was installed in nineteen ninety-two when we did the wood chip retrofit. And those components are becoming obsolete. So, it's, we have been stretching that one out for a long time. And now, this capital proposal begins levels of replacements. So, the, the other, the other thing that's probably gone through its useful life is the, on the A level, the insulation has been put off and it, it needs to be replaced. So, at some point in time, it doesn't matter what the enrollment is, if you're gonna operate a building, you know, you have to have a, a safe environment and a good learning environment. So, it's time to make these investments.
I have a part of really passion, but I think we're having a, a small issue with the use of some words there. I'm not implying that you're kicking the can down the road or that these projects be put off when I say stretch them out. My question is, we knew the windows were going to need to be replaced. We've known for years that we needed cafeteria, but we're doing a great deal of these things at once. I'm looking at fiscal year thirteen on here and we spent twenty-seven thousand. My question is, a year-over-year doubling, three fiscal years in a row, we're jamming a lot of things. That number down the bottom, that tax assessment, the taxpayers are picking that up three years in a row. We knew we needed to do these things year-over-year and we're pushing hard in three fiscal years in a time of declining enrollment. And I'm trying to figure out what the long-term plan is. There are plenty of improvements that the building needs, and I'm not asking for any sacrifices on the part of education, but I'm trying to find out what is the strategic plan? Because you're making a lot of last-minute or cutting tactical decisions on how to present the budget every year, and I'm not seeing a strategic plan represented in this five-year plan.
There, there's two points to that. One is that, while I don't, I agree with you, we're, we're not ever kicking the can down the road because we do remain committed to the building, our facilities. But a lot of things have been put off. And every year, when the school board is presented with a draft budget, there are trade-offs. And even though we are committed to the building, we often, if there's a year when we see some big jump in, for example, like the special ed costs or something, we have to take away somewhere. We try to keep our budget as low as possible. For several years, we actually level-funded our budget. When we, when we do that, you know, needs, needs need to be, you know, put off when we do that. Now, the thing with the kitchen, that, that thing has grown, that, that issue. We've always known we needed to improve our kitchen facilities. We've actually added it to every bond vote we ever put out to the communities and ended up having rejected bond votes and had to remove things from the bond vote. The kitchen kept getting removed. So, the point now, it came to us this year that, that the need was just something we couldn't ignore anymore. So, while I recognize what you're saying and I actually agree with you, it's, it's a lot to take on. But if we didn't feel like these were things we couldn't put off any longer, we wouldn't be asking for them. In the meantime, we have to try to shave everything we can off of other areas. And that's what our job is, and that's what, why, why this is only a two-point eight instead of a, you know, five percent increase or something. We're, we're cutting wherever we can. Can we do better? Maybe? Well, this is, this is, you know, this is what we think is the best answer to the issues that are facing us with our students.
Thank you. Thanks for the question. Anything else to come before the meeting? Questions from the bubble? Yes?
I'm just curious, does it not concern anyone that we have lost six towns or the population is... the population is big as we have, and there's just a small showing to show up at these meetings that where you're attempting to vote a $7 million budget? I mean, that concerns me. And I'm just wondering to know if it concerned you, or have you ever thought any way how to make it more powerful where more people would attend, or maybe more media exposure? I'm not sure. But it concerns me to see very few people. We have 377 voters in Brooklyn, so I'm sure there's that many each other. And to see a small show like this on a fairly good evening is a concern. I went to a meeting last year, and it was on a Saturday or something, again, there were 78 people. So it just seems that there isn't much participation. And that's sad, because in reality, it's their money, our money, all of it. So I'm just wondering if you ever address these concerns?
It's a good question, and I think I just want to touch the blame on last year's...
Can I ask you a question, sir? Do you think that if we were voting on the budget tonight, there would be a larger attendance?
I'm sorry, can you...
Do you think, do you think that if we were actually voting on the budget tonight, there would be a larger attendance?
In like a town meeting?
I can look at what you know, when I see turnout in my town for budgets, they're there from nine o'clock in the morning to seven o'clock at night. And the ratio is not much better, to be honest with you, unless there's something really being kicked around that's really pique their curiosity. Yeah, it'll peak up, but for the most part, it stays pretty flat and the same people come out. And it's difficult because you have people working, they have budgets, so they have to be concerned about. And then tomorrow, we're going to vote for a $7 million budget in a blizzard or something.
In a snowstorm, right?
So it just concerns me because I don't think you're getting a true accurate picture of what everyone's thinking.
So if I can just give you sort of the history, maybe you're aware of the history of why we're where we are today. We used to vote from the floor here, and we had meetings that had 50, 60 people in them or less even. And then we had meetings where we had, I think we had one meeting where we had like 600 people here in this room. We, of course, didn't have the curtain up. We had a packed room. But that wasn't very common to have large turnouts like that. We had some budget annual meetings where we voted from the floor and like that. But there was one year where the school board was petitioned, and it was back in 2006 maybe, I think, where this, am I correct, college?
2005.
2005, where we were petitioned to change our method of voting to go to Australian ballot. That was put on our warning. The voters in the communities, the five communities, made the decision to go to this method of voting. So right now, we've been doing it ever since, for better or worse. We've had the question come to us, Ralph has even brought it to us as a citizen, would the board be interested in turning it all back over, putting it on the warning and asking whether people want to go back to voting from the floor because of that very issue? As each year has gone on, we actually have a better turnout this year than we do in some other years. I mean, honestly, this is, I'm thrilled you're all here. But the reason the board has chosen to not actively put it on by themselves, onto the warning, was because it was a petition originally from the voters and the taxpayers of the towns that put it there. And we really have felt all along that it should be coming from the citizens in the five towns to take it back to the floor vote. So we've kind of taken a step away from it and are letting it work out. We do the best we can for advertising, I think. I mean, we get it in the box ads, in the paper. We can't any longer mail these out, and we haven't been doing it in quite a long time, but we do get these out as quick as they're published. They're in all the towns and whatever places we can put them. We are mailing to the tune of, what did we cost us to mail this?
Nearly $1,000.
Nearly $1,000 to mail the summary, so we try to get that out. My apologies for the incorrect date if anybody hears that and we ran one ad after another. These things happen. But anyway, when we hold an information meeting, in fact, we were going to ask about that later, we hold an information meeting a week prior, although we're not required by law to do that anymore because we hold this meeting and this meets our requirement for an information meeting prior to an Australian ballot. But we still feel committed to offering at least one other information meeting for communities to come out. We had absolutely no one show up from the five towns at our information meeting last week. I'm not sure what the issue is. I can tell you, I agree with you 100%. This is, it's always concerned us when there's low turnout for anything like this. But we're not alone. Brattleboro, I think, which is a lot bigger budget, they vote from the floor, and they get very few people showing up for their meetings. I've seen dwindling numbers happening at the Newfane and Brookline, the New Brook meeting, you know, the Newfane-Brookline budget meeting. That seems to have gone, they're changing their date from Saturday, that may have been the way, from Saturday to Wednesday, I think, is it this year?
Yes, twice.
Right. So you tell me.
Another, another issue we have is people running the school board. We have had a blank spot ever since I've been on the board from Brookline, but nobody's taken any.
Till Lindell.
Yep.
Now there's a missing one from Newfane.
Yep. And I ran unopposed, which I think is very normal.
Well, in fact, I just heard a statistic that I think it was 89% of all school board members elected last cycle, which was town meeting last March, ran unopposed. In the state of Vermont, not just here in the state.
Emily, I guess I... It would be nice, maybe, to consider some sort of roundtable or some kind of think agenda that what you can do to maybe motivate people. As a, you know, conclusion, I don't know what the answer is, to be honest with you, but there's apparently a problem.
I just like to throw in too, as we, Emily mentioned, we had the information meeting, right, last week, and we had nobody there, right?
Well, a Thursday one, two people did show up, but I'm saying the one that was close.
And we've had some great questions tonight. We have the great questions on capital and what we're doing in strategic plan. We talked about tech ed. And you guys are asking us great questions that we should be thinking of. We've been working on this budget since like November, early in November, October last year, right? So we have had ample board meetings where we've had opportunities for different insight coming from you guys to bring to the board meetings and make sure we're looking at the right thing. You know, now it's the day before a vote. We're pretty much here with what we got. We can explain to you how we got here. Can't really do much of it now. We can turn a budget down, or we can vote it through. That's where we are. But we don't get the participation at the board meetings. It helps us make sure we're developing this with the community. So I think we gotta, we gotta work on that.
You know, I do, I agree. I think we do need to work on that. We need to figure out a better way to engage the community, and that's going to be, the communities, I mean. I think of all five towns as our community. And I think that's going to be first on our agenda coming up. We do need to address that somehow.
And I think we'd see more people at the board meetings, more people at this meeting, and then the turnout too. I mean, look how many people we had vote on our budget last year. 200, 216 or so?
I think the lowest we've ever had.
I mean, that's, for, like you said, $7 million. In this community, in our communities, where people know what a dollar means around here. So we need your help.
And if you just look on page six and it will tell last year's, did you see that? Okay, we had, for two or three years, we've had this discussion, but then as soon as the meeting's over, nobody, we need like one person from the five town, member towns to get together and spearhead a petition, you know, if they want to try this. And, you know, I'm now in favor of trying something else because this isn't, I mean, we gave Australian ballot a pretty good shot, and we aren't getting, you know, when you get 200 and some, where there's 500 tax-doc voters in just a town in Jamaica, we don't even get 230, 47. So there's, you know, the, you know, and I'm not, I don't care which way it goes, I just wish like you say, that we should, I still think that 150 people sitting in this room and hearing what we heard tonight and then voting is more appropriate than somebody going to Holy Booth tomorrow and not having a clue whether they're, what they really are voting on. They go in and vote a yes or no. But anyway, if some, if we can get somebody, something that started right after this and go with it, I think we could probably have a summer vote. You know, if we get the petition in order, you could, I think the law is, you could have a vote in...
A special meeting.
Yeah, a special meeting, and then we could actually vote right, you know, at the meeting next year. But anyway, a good, very good question. Yes, Ken?
I promise myself I keep my mouth shut when I break that promise. I think first you have to believe that nobody attended this year's information meeting because of the incorrect dates. If you look back, I think that myself, Arthur, and four or five other people here have attended three informational meetings since I can remember. So sit there and post that nobody showed up to the information meeting, try to own that on the day, bro. Secondarily, and I've said for years, you know, when we talk about budgets and money, and this certainly isn't the new issue, it's a lot. I've been going up board meetings and information meetings, I think that people in general in all of the towns are feeling so disempowered that they have no empowerment, no voice, no ability to affect what the budget is, especially considering all of the state mandates and things that have to happen in school that we have to fund. I mean, we're really forced to fund a major percentage of this budget. And I think that answers, many people that I talk to in the same meeting in county meeting levels, is people just don't feel empowered enough to affect the budget because of the state mandates and what the budget's going to be. That's my perception. I don't know how you're going to change that, people. We've come and argued it time and time and time again, and I don't see it coming with the budgets, because that's what it's about. Like, there's a lot of disempowerment there because of things that are out of your control, our control, all the way around. But I will say that it's kind of shameful in the lack of participation even in the Australian ballot. You know, a town checklist are public information, and there are people sitting on your board that didn't bother to vote last year. But then to sit up there and say that people don't vote, you know, it's kind of dumb.
Yeah, I haven't looked at the, I haven't gone and looked at the checklist. I know they're public and you can do it. I'm not going to go looking for tomorrow because I don't want to point fingers on this snowstorm. You know, last year, I mean, I hear you about the information meetings, but I will tell you, I think Lindell, you were at our information meeting last year, one of only two people who were there, and we grabbed her and we corralled her because she was, she told us she was from Brookline. And we said, oh, we're desperate for a Brookline board member. Are you interested? And the next thing you know, she's on the board, which we're thrilled that happened. But she was one of only two that turned up last year.
Only two at last year.
And that's happened quite a number of years. And I will say, just to say it again, I feel really bad about what happened with that budget summary that got mailed out. And because of that, we did try to make corrections, but because of it, we were here on the 30th as well. And, you know, it was true, Allison just came from Townsend, we had one other. So we do have people, we did have people show up, so we held the two of them just in case. But in all truth, for those two nights when we had information meetings last week, we still only got two people. So I, you know, it's a tough one. It is, and I know it's hard for people to get out.
This probably isn't the time to do this, but I was just thinking, and I wonder if we did, I know, I would love to have lessons on how things are calculated, understanding the intricacies of budgeting, and perhaps if there were some classes that people could attend so that they at least understood how it impacts their property taxes and how, and how the budget is developed, and what considerations are taken, you know, and then something that would have to be done well before the budget time because at that time we're really busy, but...
Well, in fact, there are webinars that anybody can sign up for at the state level. I think they do them both at the tax department, and they do them at Vermont School Boards Association. You can sign up for those. We can hold them here, you know, if people are interested in that, for sure. I would say though, we might want to watch and see what's happening this year because there's an awful lot of conversation going on about ed funding at the state level this year. And we may see some changes happening up there in the legislature this year, so we might want to hold up, explaining it all to you if it's going to change.
Yes?
I was at the Jamaica coffee shop yesterday, picked up my second copy of this, one for my wife. And that's the second location. The other was down in, at the market in Townsend where I found these out. And at both places, I stopped for a good 15 minutes, surveyed every single person that walked past, asked them when the school board meets, where do they meet? Do they know anything about the budget? Not a single person has a clue where to meet. I shouldn't have to hunt and peck on the internet, on a website, call in representatives, trying to find out where the sausage is made, when the sausage is made. I have no idea
Well, we weren't our meetings.
where you guys are meeting and why this is not, I mean, we're talking about reaching out to the community. Where in this document right here is your, is the big prominent location? This is when and where to meet up with us to find out what is going on.
I think we have our gentleman here to help us with our PR. I think he's done an astounding good job. I think we should draft you.
Well, on our Leland and Gray website, and it's kind of easy to find, it tells all the meeting minutes, all the agendas are there. They're there before the meeting, so you can come to a meeting informed about what happened at the last meeting. You can, that's how I started to become interested in being on this board because I started reading the minutes online, and I saw things that concerned me. And I started coming to meetings because I wanted to be there, and it was too late once it had happened and I was reading about something in the past. But we keep up, I think, with everything right on the Leland and Gray website, and we've got our own section there.
I will, I'll tell you, I've been a school board member for 20 years now, and the communication with our communities as far as letting people know is a heck of a lot better than it used to be because we have a lot more avenues to put out there. We've never changed our location of our meetings. In fact, even this meeting, we talked about doing it at the Dutton Gym up at the front of the school, and then we said, well, no, it's always traditionally been the main gym, so let's even keep it here. We haven't changed the dates. We've always met, as long as I've been on Leland and Gray, the second Tuesday of the month, except we used to have two meetings a month, and now we reduce it down to one meeting a month. We have always held them in the library since we moved out of the conference room, which was back in 2005 or something. I mean, we warn all of our meetings, they're warned in the paper, and they're warned on the websites, and we announce them in our agendas for each, I mean, if there's something else we can do, I hope we'll get told, and we'll do it, whatever it takes.
Well, including it in this book, in this booklet, that would be good, right? That's one thing we could do.
Right here, Leland and Gray. Oh, you're saying that it regularly?
I'm going to read this.
Sure. I mean, I got to tell you again, this costs us a lot, so we have pared it down. I mean, we combine now the superintendent's report and the principal, and the board chair's report into one report, so we have less pages because it costs quite a lot to do these. But that's a good idea. We should say, we meet on the second Tuesday. We do say it on our website, you know, when we meet. We haven't changed our time, seven o'clock. I hope you all come.
If I could just mention, anytime I go to a ball game, or, I mean, I interact with the parent community and some other members of the public at games, I've seen, I mean, you at events these days, I just saw you on television. I mean, the public access TV is getting out there, and people say, oh, you had quite a lively board meeting, or, you know, I saw you were talking about this. People seem to be getting a lot of information. I didn't imagine that people would actually sit for two, three more hours to actually watch the whole proceedings of the board meeting. Sometimes they go, oh, I watched the whole thing, you know, I had a question. And then there was a board meeting about two months ago where about 30, 45 people came representing different constituencies because they had an issue, and they wanted airtime with, you know, the time for comment from the public, which lasted probably 45, 50, 16 minutes, where they could share their point of view, and the school board and I and Stephen could respond and address it there, and then continue to address it after the meeting. So I appreciate that venue, and I know this is a concern that we don't have enough people here. I have never had so many people talk to me about the school board meetings in my six years as administrator as I have had this year, specifically because they're watching it on mobile access.
So we appreciate.
I would second that, getting 15 signatures from a petition this year. I think five out of 15 mentioned that they'd seen the meetings on TV. I mean, it doesn't, the problem is it doesn't have a, we haven't been getting any participation back from those viewers. We don't have a, we haven't been getting communication back from them, and like going towards it... back from, and like going towards a 21st century model, where maybe we're not all sitting in the same room, but we're all communicating with each other, finding ways that we can get the voters to give back to us some of their feedback. Would be a great helpful thing. We certainly read correspondence, but it's rarely like on it, but maybe that's where also we're going in the future.
And that'll be a part of our discussion, I think, and it's true, public ask, people tell me all the time, they see our meetings on TV, but you know, you don't have to just have cable, I don't have cable, but I still watch them, because you can go online and watch all of them, they're posted online. So, if you missed one, or you don't get cable, you can actually see our meetings online, because private community television does provide that for all of us.
So, I think it's a great comment. I mean, obviously, that's a good discussion, so we'll take you back and, you know, try and come up with some different ways to make it more obvious.
Yep.
I put out a list of cable listeners, sir, and on Saturday, I asked them to do my poll, and it went out and so forth, so I think there's a hundred and twenty-five people that listen to it, and yet, you know, I still see that, you know, there is a participation that they're hopeful of, and I'm not sure what the answers are, I'll be honest with you.
And I put it out, Mr. Dantza.
Pardon me?
I sent it out as well.
Yeah, so...
From Brookline, so it went twice.
Yeah.
So, let's watch.
So, communication, I don't think is an issue. I don't think.
Any other questions from anyone? Yes?
I'd go back to the Capitol needs, something that occurred to me, has the board, you probably have, and wondering if you have, if you could share it, have you given a thought, developed estimates as to how, how long into the future it would be, at the point that it would become more efficient to replace the facility than to continue band-aiding it, repairing, maintenance, not being...
Our whole building, our whole facility?
Yeah.
Well, we haven't had that conversation in an awful long time. We actually think our facility's in pretty darn good shape, for the most part, because like I said, we do take good care of it, because the community's on it.
The reason I ask that is because the article in the Reformers said that we had an aging facility.
Well, it is aging, it's forty, what, two years old, or whatever, but we're keeping it in good condition. I live in a two-hundred-year-old's home, my home's aging too, but I'm not gonna get rid of it.
I think you missed the point.
No, I know, and I'm saying, we haven't ever gone there, because we are not in need of a new facility right now. If there's a need, I'm sorry, if there's a, you know, if there's a need, we did talk about it quite extensively in the past, when we had need for more space, and didn't make much sense to, you know, not take a look at that, but I think it was back in, you know, it's been ten years at least since we've had a look at that. The problem, you know, with a school building, especially a high school, middle high school like this, you also need fields, land, you know, it's hard to come across a location that's good.
You know, hey Frank, if I could pass that, or just after that, because we were talking about the capital improvement, so we're showing off to 2017, right? I mean, you know, we're spending some money here on important things. Come 2018, and what do we, what do we look like? I mean, based on this, can we, are we getting to where we wanna be, so that we expect that to, you know, till off? Have we looked at that, you know, long term?
We have, and we're obviously very mindful of where we came from, which is, as Emily was referring to, 1996, we did the expansion for the science room, behind that wall was air, and we added two stories that was designed for that in 1970. And we're just about to pay off that bond. We will pay that off, I think, next year. And so, as those kinds of investments do mature, what they bought has a useful life, and it's just prudent to renew those investments, you know, twenty, twenty-five years out. That is what this represents. The heating system is serviced very well, it continues to service well, but it's time, you know, to make that reinvestment and extension. Then also remember, we did some major renovations in 2007, 2008, completed a job in 2010, and that was to accommodate really a very different program use, and an interest in the community to use the Dutton Gym for what it was originally designed for, and that's been very well received. So, we have made major investments over the years, but the ones that we're making now are really looking at those, those original investments that are, that are at or beyond their useful life, and it's time to extend that utility. You know, in this case, it's, as Durin has mentioned in the rationale, it's also a lot more detail on the website at the budget overview. The poverty in our area has increased, and it has an effect on the need for providing food to families, and fortunately, we're getting some help through the federal aid program for that. But to utilize that and to take advantage of that, we have to have facilities that meet basic standards, you know, for food safety, and so, that's the nature of these types of investments. If you go back a little further than you had mentioned, you will see that we were making a hundred thousand dollar a year investments in capital. After we did the bond in 2007, finished the project, we really tailed those investments off in 2013, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, but prior to that, you would have seen, not unusual to have eighty to a hundred thousand in this portion of the budget. We took a break after the bond vote, but bond vote didn't, it didn't address some of these improvements that we...
I think we did a roof, we did the roof membrane, that was probably the last larger one.
I think it was.
A few years ago. And Frank mentioned about poverty, I think it was Durin who shared with me the other day, in the last three, three years, our poverty rate has gone from thirty-eight percent to forty-eight percent at Leland and Gray. So, it's a substantial increase for us, and our kids and families are feeling the pain.
Any other questions?
Could I add a word here, though, about, I mean, because it was characterized that this work is band-aided on the building, and the kitchen, the food service, I mean, when we were informed about the need, it struck me that since I was born, forty-five years ago, there has not really been any money put towards a kitchen for students at this school. It's been taken out of budget, it's been cut. This is the first time, this isn't, this is not replacing, it's replacing coolers that food service people lent to us and things like that at the time. There's no, it's not replacing something, it's pretty much new, I mean, a reality.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public?
I don't want this to sound cheeky, but I can't find the budget line item that covers the active recruitment of tuition students or community relations. What line item is covered by that? What, who's responsible, which department is actively recruiting tuition students?
It's in administration and council. It's in administration and council, like we have a communications budget, it's also written into our two school counselors' job descriptions, the amount of recruitment they're supposed to do, the visits to Dover and to Marlboro. To Dover and to Marlboro, and we added Wordsboro, when it became that they were more eligible to other schools, and so, that's in there. Another, he says in our communications budget, is five times a year, we print a newsletter, a deliberate newsletter, and it's something like eight pages, there's a recent addition, and those are delivered to all of our, all of our schools, so Dover and Marlboro included, the Joyce Towns, Wordsboro, and our Union Towns, and there's a, you know, like a plastic clear display case where they're placed in, so it's prominent in their main offices, so people can see, "Hey, this is what's going on at Leland and Gray, I think this will be effective," as well as expensively on our website, everyone can see the big makeover that took place about a year and a half ago. I think we have one of the most attractive websites of schools I've seen, and prominent on there, so there's this link, Students and Parents, School Choice, is right on there, and it's kept updated based on the new state regulations, as well as adapting it for what our protocol, protocols are. So, of course, we also published a brochure, we had two editions of this, I don't have a copy of it on me, but you can find it on there, and so all of our recruitment packets have a very attractive brochure that we invested a few thousand dollars in, not just for the design, but the full color publication. We also have recruitment with our sister schools, four of them in China, and part of that is that we have a, what they call a two-plus-one program, where the students were, we set it up at a school outside of Beijing, and there are ten students from Hebei Sheng, Tangshan, Foreign Language School, it's a public school. Ten students will be interviewing in April to come to Leland and Gray in fall. So, those are all full tuition-paying students, plus their other expenses, because about a year and a half ago, Leland and Gray received the F1 approval from the federal government to allow foreign tuition-paying students to come to Leland and Gray for one year. Now, we had a very unfair disadvantage, in that private schools are not limited by the number of years tuition-paying students from foreign countries can come, so any private school, Vermont Academy, they can take a student for however many years that they want to attend, but in, across the United States, the public schools, they only take a foreign student who pays tuition for one year. So, part of that two-plus-one program is such that they would study the American curriculum for tenth and eleventh grade, and spend their senior year at Leland and Gray, which includes assistance with college placement, SAT prep, and the other programs that we offer for all Leland and Gray seniors, but it's been very well received. Another problem we face with this is about half of the students who have applied and been accepted from China to Leland and Gray did not receive a visa to attend from our US government. So, that has been another challenge that we face. But there is another recruitment, as I, we had recruitment in March 2012, I went over there, we had a teacher, a social studies teacher was also part of the Journey Ease program, she went over there a year ago, and now this spring, she's going back to interview those students outside of Beijing. So, we're doing a lot for recruitment, I always wanna do more, so more ideas welcome.
And the other part you asked about is communication. We at Leland and Gray, on the board, we've talked about it quite a number of times, we've talked about PR, and could we engage somebody, I mean, the board doesn't really have the expertise or the time to do it, and we can't really ask our administration, and a lot of schools will hire a PR person, even just part-time, to start, you know, putting information out for us, and, but we've never been able to fund that, we've never felt like we could do that. So, we've leaned on our administration and our staff to help us with that, and we do the best we can with it. We can always improve, so I hope you'll share whatever information you have to help us.
Any other questions? Ready for Article VII? Article VII reads, "To transact any other business that may legally come before the meeting."
Ralph, we have one thing we wanted, we just wanted to ask all of you, when we held our information meeting last week, even though, you know, we actually had two of them, and a little glitch with the thing, but we always have held one on the Tuesday prior to this annual meeting, it's been traditional, we've been doing it as long as I've been around, but we aren't required to do it, and people aren't coming to it. So, we wanted to ask you, do you want us to continue to do that, or should we not bother to hold an annual meeting, just hold this one for the information meeting? So, we're just trying to get feedback. And we talked about it at our board meeting, and we decided we would just put it out under other business to the people who attend.
Did you get some information from your group last week?
They have two opportunities for people who can't make it to this one, but...
Is there no different information?
No, no.
If there's anything I should be writing down, I am not hearing it right now.
The comment was, "There's no different information."
Okay.
All right.
We're offering the same thing, both meetings, basically. We're presenting the same budget, of course, it's been out there for a while, we offer the same opportunity, what we do it for is to give a second time, if someone can't make it tonight, we just thought, it's always been traditional, we have kept doing it. We're just trying to get the information out. It's up to you. Actually, just, we just wanted feedback, we'll discuss it, but...
Realistically, you can come to any board meeting and ask questions.
That's true. Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, the idea of coming to a meeting last week, and then coming to this one, and I don't wanna get the same information, is there a point in the budget where I cannot possibly come to, you know, just one meeting and listen to and maybe hit a, hit the idea that I'm really concerned about? So, I'm just wondering, is there a time when you're closer to the end of getting the budget ready, that that becomes a real informational, so there could be some impact before it's in writing?
Yeah, we hold, we hold an additional meeting, actually, in budget development time. We, I told you, we go, we went, we moved from two meetings a month to one meeting a month, but in, but in the budget development month, which is November, right, we hold an additional budget information meeting to try to get feedback from the community before we actually vote on a budget to propose.
Emily, the only other thing, what we were just talking about, same thought as you were saying, and I don't know if it's something we could discuss, but if it was possible during that budget process, that we said, "At this meeting, we're gonna talk about capital," you know, "We're gonna talk about capital in this." And then, and then the people who really have some real good input for that stuff, or yourself, on certain items, might say, "That budget means the one I give a, you know, some value to." And then at the end, then we say, "Okay, this is the more finalized meeting before we put it to bed," you know, and that might be something.
The other thing we do do is we put on our draft budget on the website, as soon as the board has had a look at it, we put that on, and Durin does a budget rationale, which also gets put on the website for community to look at, and then they can come again to an additional meeting to talk to us, this is all before we vote on the budget itself. So, that information is there. We typically have to update those, because we still are in the process of making changes. Durin had to do an updated budget rationale this year, because we made some changes to the budget after we first won, first draft. In fact, I think we had three drafts this year.
Yes, Stephen?
So, I can review just, because you're representative of all different towns, the annual cycle of budgeting starts in October, particularly for Leland and Gray, and for in November, early November, for Brookline New Thing, because both of those meetings and votes on the budget by the public happen this tomorrow and a week from tomorrow. So, those budgets have to be really voted and approved by the boards in terms of being proposed budgets in December. And then, then you have your other town, school districts, voting their budgets in January, because they have the thirty to forty days prior to the annual meeting on March, usually a town meeting day. Wordsboro does it Monday before. But, so, it's a timeline that works every year, I mean, it's not gonna change in terms of what we have to do for publication, warning, and so forth. So, if you keep that in mind, really, the season about budget seems awfully far in advance, but it has to be November, December, and in your local towns, December, January.
Anything else from before the meeting?
Just saying, I mean, I don't know if anybody can, if anybody needs, if anybody knows if anybody needs help to get to the polls, I hope you'll at least let us know. And Gloria, I don't know if you've had many people, I've been trying to tell people, I've been... been out of town, but I've been trying to tell people. The one, one thing about Australian ballot is you actually can vote absentee. So maybe people did get out and vote absentee.
We have 38 absentee ballots.
We did have 38 in Newfane.
That's good.
So that's higher than normal, isn't it? I think people were anticipating this storm. Pardon me?
You had.
They've had three. Wow. That's a pretty good percentage for Wyndham, I think. So I don't know what Townsend's looking like or anything, but Jamaica, Brookline. But if anybody needs any help. It's going to be a tough day. This happened to us a couple years ago. Was it two, three years ago now?
Three years.
Three years ago, we had a snowstorm that was a very low turnout. But we still had, I think, 200 and something people came and voted that year. It's not something we can change. I mean, if we were voting off the floor, we could have all met, you know, and said, like you do sometimes at your town meetings, we could have said, we're going to recess the meeting and hold it at another date. But we can't do that with Australian ballot. So vote on tomorrow. It's our mother nature. We need some.
If there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this portion of the meeting.
Move.
And move. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And now I'm just going to read the warning. I think I'm supposed to read the warning for the Australian ballot.
Sure.
Warning for the Leland and Gray Union High School District Number 34 Australian ballot. The legal holders of the Leland and Gray Union High School District Number 34 approaching the towns of Brookline, Jamaica, Newfane, Townsend, Wyndham are hereby notified and warned to meet in the town offices in the town of Brookline, the town offices in the town of Jamaica, the New Brook Firehouse, Vermont Route 30, in the town of Newfane, and the town hall in the town of Townsend, and the town offices in the town of Wyndham respectively. On Wednesday, February 5th, 2014, vote by Australian ballot on the following question, beginning at 9:00 AM in Brookline, 10:00 AM in Jamaica, 9:00 AM in Newfane, 9:00 AM in Townsend, and 10:00 AM in Wyndham. Polls will close in all such towns at 7:00 PM. Article 1 shall the Leland and Gray Union School District adopt a budget of $6,999,318 due to free its expenses and liabilities for the 2014-2015 school year dated at Townsend, Vermont, this third day of January in the year 2014. I think that takes care of our legal questions. Thank you all for coming. Thanks for great questions. And thanks to the board for attempting to answer everyone, every all of them.